Okay, we'll call the planning commission meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Valeri.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mrs. Simperman.
Here.
Ms. Moritz.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the May 4th meeting. Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Abstain.
Mr. Varga.
Approve.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Abstain.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Do you want to do the 25th, the special meeting?
Yep.
Seventeenth. Seventeenth. We'll do the special meeting of the planning commission with a work session on the 17th. Entertained a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Abstain.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
We have four public hearings this evening. The format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they're going to do at a particular location. Then anyone wishing to speak against is given an opportunity. Then we'll close the public hearing and then ask for questions of the commission and the administration. So with that in mind, the first this evening is a conditional use permit to allow medical offices a similar use at 8587 East Avenue. Is that applicant here? Would you come forward and identify yourself up to the podium and identify yourself for the clerk, please?
I'm Dr. Ogunleesi and this is my wife Abby.
Very good. And give us a quick overview of what you want to do at that location.
Okay. We want to use that location to see patients and provide infectious disease consultation to those patients. We typically see patients about twice a month in the city of Mentor. That's what we've been doing for the past seven years since we started the practice. And we want to move into a bigger location to afford us to see more patients and offer more services.
Okay. Anyone wishing--
That location, in addition to that, that location would also be the administrative office for the practice. Currently, we time share in Mentor and have an administrative office in Willoughby where we schedule our patients. We do all the billing. All the paperwork is done there. At this location, we're going to combine both the clinic and administrative together into one location.
Okay. And would you give your name for the clerk, please?
My name is Abby, well, Medina Ogunleesi. Thank you.
Did you get that?
Medina, I'll spell it for you. M.E., M for money, E for egg, D for dog, I for ink, N for Nancy, A for apple, T for term, Ogunleesi, O-G-U-N-L-E-S-I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Yeah, the applicant has provided a revised site plan showing the handicap parking, the striping, and trash enclosure that will be constructed at the rear. They will need to get an interior building permit, so we may want to condition that those be done as part of the building permit.
Okay. So you've read the staff report?
Correct.
And there's four conditions listed there?
Correct.
And you agree with those conditions?
Yes, and of those four conditions--
I'm sorry.
There are three.
The three conditions on page two. The first is to provide written confirmation as to the disposition of each of the city engineers and fire departments comment. One and two we're going to definitely do as part of our application.
Okay.
Two and, number three and number four, which is C6 and T9, is that updated drawing in there. So we will comply with the conditions.
Okay. So we're in good shape. You're in good shape.
Great.
Okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant? Mrs. Simperman, you look a little puzzled.
I just want to make sure we only have three conditions, correct?
Well, there's three listed there. I should have put my glasses on, but I didn't.
Okay.
And I thought there were four.
Okay, well, no, because the applicant mentioned four, so I was kind of confused.
No, three on page two. The conditions are three.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Any questions for the applicant or the administration? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Your second?
Second.
Jess, call the roll, please.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Good luck.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Second and third items are related. It's conditional use permit to allow outside dining and or drinking at 8500 Station Street. Is that applicant here? And then the next is for the ability to do a restaurant at that location. But we'll address number two first. So tell us what you want to do there.
For the outside or for the--
Yeah, number two, which is the outside dining and or drinking. So it's the rear patio.
Yeah, we just want to have 80 seats outside, do some live music from 7:00 to 9:00 P.M.
Okay.
Basically about it.
That's pretty it.
It's easy.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion on the number two, which is the outside patio. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Uh.
You've got to get this done before the grand opening, right?
Right, it's got a week.
I think one thing we did put in here is I think they, we were going to allow for soft background music on the patio. I don't know that you have it right now.
Soft background music? We don't have anything currently.
So.
So is that something you want?
Yeah.
I mean, on the days where you don't have the band?
Yeah.
I was remiss. I didn't get your name and address.
You wouldn't be able to hear in the park.
I didn't get your name and address for the clerk.
Oh, sorry, my name's Ryan Scanlon. Address of 8389 Orchard Road in Concord.
Okay. So background music is okay on the off days of the live entertainment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you understand that there is a noise ordinance in the city?
Starts at 10:00 P.M., correct?
No.
Nine? What time does it start?
It could be complaint driven, so as long as you understand that there is a noise ordinance and you may have to curtail or tone it down.
Yeah, we've also adjusted how we're doing it so the music, when playing, directly faces the building as opposed to out, so it should muffler it.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman.
Just because of the comment you just made, you might be aware that there might be an echo issue if you face it towards the building. I was thinking you were going to face it towards the railroad tracks.
Yeah, we're just going to, so the way the patio is structured--
You can point on there, we can see it.
So we're going to put the music here.
Okay.
So it'll feed in and this wall opens up.
Right.
So it shouldn't bounce off. It's really not going to be that loud anyway.
Okay.
Because, hey, we're not, it's a restaurant first, so not a club, so it shouldn't, it's not going to be crazy.
Okay, and then the outdoor hours of the patio are 11:00 to 11:00 P.M., correct? On your door, you have 10:00 P.M.
So we do 10:00 P.M., so Sunday through Thursday, we do 11:00 to 10:00. Friday, Saturday, we do 11:00 to 11:00.
Oh, okay.
Inside, outside, it's--
The same.
The same.
Okay, and you have here that the music will be from 7:00 to 9:30, is that correct?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine? If we put that as a condition, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. That'll be condition number two that we'll be changing. And then, are you planning on having an outdoor bar?
The bar is inside of the building. We removed the old bar that was there, ripped it apart, it's just going to be tables. So the bar is right here.
Okay, so you're okay if we put down a condition that there will be no outside bar?
Sure. There will be drinking outside.
Right.
There will be no physical bar outside.
Okay, and you're okay with no outside preparation of food also?
Mm-hmm.
So no outside preparation of food or drinks, I could say? Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything else for the applicant? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with seven conditions.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Now we'll go to item three, so don't go far. Tell us about the restaurant a little bit.
It's got 140 seats inside.
Okay. Did you do an exorcism there?
No, we should have, but we didn't, no.
Okay.
We're doing a nice, slow cleanse.
Okay.
Have anybody been in? It's different than it was. Trying to serve modern, American tavern food. Nice, friendly service, reasonable prices for what we're doing.
Okay. And where did you, just out of curiosity, where did you come from?
My last seven years, I worked for Burntwood Tavern.
Okay.
In 11 different locations. Before that, I worked for John Palmer's when it was still in Chardon. I actually worked in this building when I was like 20.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Spence?
Yeah, I have one comment. I noticed I was made aware out front, there are parking along Station Street in front of the building. And that's actually supposed to be an asphalt sidewalk in front of the building.
In front? There's a concrete sidewalk. In between the building and the road.
Right.
Yes.
Anyway, there shouldn't be any parking on that strip at all there.
We can certainly take care of that for you.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman.
I just have a comment, it has nothing to do with this, but I noticed that when I was there, the kitchen is an open area.
Mm-hmm.
Just, my observance was the lighting in the kitchen is very bright compared to the restaurant. You might want to--
We have it on dimmers.
Yeah, but not until later.
Yeah.
So you might want to think about putting something there to shield it. Just like, personal opinion.
Anything else, Mrs. Simperman?
No.
Mr. Sedoti?
Thank you. Just for a matter of clarification.
Sure.
In the body of the staff report, it says the patio will seat 127 customers. And in your letter dated May 3rd, it says 100 customers.
Yeah, we're only putting 100 chairs out there.
Just 100?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item four, conditional use permit to allow temporary events at 4689 Corduroy. Hope that sweatshirt works tonight.
All right. It has.
Okay, give us a quick overview of what you want to do.
We'd like to have a car show with live music in the Hennings Plaza. Trying to like to make it like a family-friendly, community event. Serving food, hot food.
Okay, if you would, identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Mikio Shepherd. I'm the owner of Shepherd's Buy Trade, and so I'm the person trying to facilitate this.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
No, we just included seven conditions.
Okay, and you've read the staff report and you see those seven conditions and those are fine?
Uh.
Have you seen the staff report?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm totally good with that.
Okay, good. Commission members, any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with seven conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jess, call the roll, please.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
You're good.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Mr. Spence, all items under the old business are tabled and will remain on the table, is that correct?
Correct, we didn't get any new information.
Okay, what?
No new information.
You're good.
No caps.
Under new business, item nine, final site plan and architecture review of warehouse building at 6240 Tin Man. Nothing's changed since last time on that rendering, huh?
Um, no, it has not.
Same old.
Okay, good. We did do a sightline study, and I'll get to in a little bit here. But again, my name's Brian Osborne, and I represent ME Osborne. And we are here tonight seeking final site plan and architectural approval to build a best-in-class, approximately 182,000 square feet distribution facility to be located on 13.59 acres of land on the west side of Tin Man Road. This facility will be owned and operated by Highland, Inc. And yes, as I mentioned, nothing has changed on the rendering. We're proposing a structural steel frame building with 42 feet high painted precast panels. And we've got a sample of the precast here. The, this is the white paint that we're proposing with the blue stripe. And the water table color, unfortunately, we just got this sample, and it's going to be grayer than this. This had a green tint, we don't like it. It's going to be a light gray water table, which starts right here, goes around the building, and then down the dock. This will go around the entire building, and it'll be more prominent where the docks are lower, so. But this green is not representative. I apologize, it was a late sample, and it will be a light gray, similar to the rendering. Additionally, the building will include two-story, 13,700 square, approximately 13,700 square feet of office space with a glazed aluminum curtain wall entrance with a gray window tint. And this is, this is the curtain wall system. So it'll be an aluminum frame with a gray window tint. Additionally, the building will include 14 loading docks, one trash compactor, and 12 future dock cutouts. And the facility will have 160-car parking. The updated landscape plan was submitted and includes additional landscaping to the front basin consistent with the rendering. And finally, we conducted a sightline analysis. So that's standing in the middle of Tin Man Road, approximately five feet high, looking up at the facility with the proposed HVAC rooftop units. As you can see, those units are not visible from this vantage point. The units are approximately four and a half feet tall, and from this vantage point, we calculated that the units would actually have to be 18 feet tall to be visible from this vantage point.
Mr. Spence, any comments there? I think the only place I want to see the HVAC is probably from the Heasley Road Bridge over, right?
You will see them from there. That's a much higher--
Right.
--vantage point.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman?
How about from Tyler?
Well, we did it at the--
Obviously, as you get farther away, you're going to have more chance of seeing them.
Yes. We did it at the property line. I can have the architects look at it from Tyler to see, but I do not have that data.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Spence, it should not be seen from any, on the same elevation anywhere around the building, correct?
Off-site views, yes, from Tyler, too.
Yeah. So obviously--
Around Heasley, though. I mean, Heasley, you're going to see--
I don't know what you're going to do about Heasley, the bridge.
The overpass, there's nothing you can do about that.
Not just the overpass, just Heasley in general.
Well, you got the, you got the change in grade as you get into the bridge, so--
Correct.
I mean, obviously, you'll see it there. I don't know what you, I don't, my own personal opinion is I don't know what you do about that.
Well, let me ask this question. Are you going to screen them at all? Or are you saying that they're just going to be up there with no screening?
Our plan today is not to screen.
At all.
Correct.
So if it becomes problematic from Tyler, or it becomes problematic from Tin Man, you could screen them?
Yes.
If that becomes necessary?
How many units are we talking?
We're talking, I believe, 20 units.
Mr. Chairman?
And this is the unit, it's just a standard, standard rooftop, train.
So if we put a condition in there that it becomes necessary to screen them from Tyler, from a view from Tyler, a view from Tin Man, you're agreeable to that?
I need to defer to Highland on this one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So good.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Valeri, you got a comment?
I do, only because I drive across that bridge on a daily basis, and I also drive to Beechwood on a daily basis, and I see the new medical facility that's going up by, I don't think that's UH, I think it's, who's the other hospital?
Lake Health.
It's, no, it's--
Cleveland Clinic.
The clinic.
And they built some very nice parapits around the rooftop units. And your obstacle here is going to be you've got 20 package units up there.
Right.
What's the size of those units?
They're 25-ton units, approximately four and a half feet tall by 10 feet long. The issue we're going to have is they're 20 spread-out units. Highland has requested that the entire facility be air-conditioned. So a lot of times warehouses are not air-conditioned, so you don't see, there's no need for the units. So we're, you know, these units will be kind of evenly spaced out over the roof.
My concern is it's, you've got 20 units up there. And I think from this viewpoint, you may not see it, but once you start getting away from it, you're gonna. My concern's going to be, how do we manage that? And it's going to be after the fact, and it's going to become a hardship to actually do something about it. I'd like us to come up with a solution now, and I think we need to shield each of those units and blend it in. I don't think you can put a parapet up around that, but I want to see something more than what we've seen at other places where they just put a little vinyl fence around them, and that's not the intent, or at least I don't think that's what the intent is.
Well, and, you know, a lot of times, the units, like the facility you're referring to, a lot of times they're bunched in together, and, you know, a parapet can handle that cluster of units. These will be more spaced out. We can, you know, look at solutions, but kind of a full parapet wall is, is, just won't be, won't be doable, right?
And I don't think doing nothing, for me, is not going to be doable, so--
Okay.
So we're going to have to come up with something in between to try to bridge this gap.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Is it possible, I'm just throwing this out, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm looking at some wiggle room here. If the units that were closest to the edge of the building, the ones you see first from any direction, if you shielded those from sight, realize you've got a big ocean and you have these spread out all over, but the ones that you see closest to the elevations, I don't know how many of those are, I don't know where they're located, but if you just screened those from the exterior of the building--
Okay, yeah.
Rather than trying to, I don't know how you do all those units all over the place, but the ones that you would see first--
On the outside perimeter units--
And I'm not, I'm not trying to negotiate here, I'm just suggesting that my--
That's a good option.
--idea is a possibility.
I mean, the applicant's agreed to shield them if it becomes problematic, so.
We'll agree now also that the outside perimeter units will screen somehow.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman?
Do you have an elevation with these units showing on them? Because the only elevation we have doesn't even show where the units are--
They're showing.
--or anything, unless I'm missing it.
I do not, I do not have that drawing.
I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's necessary to see that drawing. I mean, if Mrs. Simperman wants to see it, but I'm not sure at this point it's necessary because you've agreed to screen the ones that are in view, so we'll do that, right?
Yes.
Anything else? We'll put that in as a condition, if that's okay.
Okay.
Well, even if it's not okay, we're going to put it in as a--
Right.
So. Okay, I'll entertain a motion with that added as a condition.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
The third one being that they've agreed, that the applicant has agreed to shield the exterior, the perimeter HVAC units, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
And with the building materials that you presented this evening, those are fine, I think, right?
With the exception of the color.
Well, with the exception of the color, but that's... You pointed that color out, so...
Correct.
It'll be gray, grayer.
Similar gray to the rendering.
Got you. Anything else, commissioners, that you want to see added? Okay, is there... Was there a second?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Valeri.
Call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Now, you're the absent member, Mr. Sedoti, all the time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Item ten, road vacation of Kelly Drive. Got the IT guy with us here today.
Sean Jurisch with Wisconsin Companies, and here tonight seeking the approval of... Or recommendation of approval for the vacation of Kelly Drive. Obviously, everybody's familiar with Kelly Drive here, currently abuts Route Two, the Route Two off-ramp, and just to the south of Route Two, and currently feeds the couple existing homes, three homes, as well as the Kelly Midway industrial building here.
So, you read the staff report?
Yes.
You agreed to the stipulations that are in the staff report?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
With the moving of the light box and...
Correct, yeah, we've already been in discussions with Lake County.
Okay, and the fire department's requested the road remain there until all the buildings are demolished?
Correct.
Fine with that? Okay. Mr. Spence, anything from the administration further than that?
I think they are going to remove the overhead light poles.
Yeah, everything underground will remain, but the overhead...
Overhead poles and electrical service will be removed.
That's good. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Zeman?
Yeah, obviously, this road vacation is a component of the redevelopment of this block. I'd like to see a condition that, in fact, the roadway itself ultimately is removed. I understand the fire department wants it to stay for emergency purposes until demolition of those structures is completed, that's all well and good, but once those structures are demolished, we want, you know, full removal of the surface and, you know, full-depth removal. So, I'd recommend that that be a condition and that appropriate bonding, you know, be put in place per the city engineer's cost estimate.
Okay. You agree to that?
Yep.
It's not going to be a driveway, is it?
No, the access point will be eliminated.
Yeah, and obviously, my concern is the what-ifs. What if something happens and the project stalls? We may get this quasi-private driveway, and that could cause some problems down the road if people aren't aware that it's a...
And the curbing will be replaced along six-fifteen?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Varga?
Just had a question. So, you're saying you're leaving the utilities underground?
Yeah, the...
They're being abandoned, or are they being... They're going to remain active but just underground?
Correct.
Are you reusing any of those?
We will reuse, for example, the sanitary sewer, we will tie into that, as well as the gas, and we're working with Aqua Ohio on the water situation.
And what you're going to do with them? Okay, I just want to make sure they're just not stagnant.
Right.
Yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sedoti?
Thank you. Mr. Spence, just for my own information, will council pass a... Adopt a resolution of intent to vacate, then you publish in a newspaper for two weeks, then it comes back and passes an ordinance to vacate, and then you file...
It'll be placed on council's agenda, they will advertise it as a public hearing, and then they will adopt an ordinance vacating it.
And then, normally, not all the time, but normally, they take the center line of that road, and will the state take title to the northern portion?
We've already contacted the state, they don't want it.
Good, good. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, Mr. Zeman, you want to rephrase that language so we get it right in the minutes for the condition?
Yes, the right-of-way vacation is recommended for approval, subject to the applicant's eventual removal of the roadway surface in full depth unless the city engineer believes that some subsurface removal is not required. Bonding shall be posted in accordance with the demolition cost estimates as approved by the city engineer, and that could be done as part of the building permit process eventually.